Just a couple of announcements I'd like to make. Following our housing study, we're going to establish a task force, that was one of the recommendations. They're going to be looking at strategies for rehabilitation and development of housing to meet the needs of this community, and it'll be composed of stakeholders. And I want to thank the following nineteen people that have accepted the challenge to serve on this committee, and I'd like to read their names. Betty Tilmoni, Sherri Eddy Kriegler, Jim Verchota, Dan Weiss, Jack Richter, Danny Rivers, Brad Ballard, Dave Pringle, Jim Murphy, Linda Betka, Tabitha Fisher, Nick Larson, Rebecca Rowe, Dan Mateka, Bob Bamanic, Dela Schmidt, Amanda Hedlund, John Croftchok, and Jerry Papenfuss. Thank you very much for stepping up on that. Also want to mention that we have some visitors coming this week, both are on Thursday and Friday. WCCO is going to be here as part of their Going to the Lake series, and they're coming down, and they're going to have a busy time looking at outdoor, primarily outdoor recreation in Winona in the wintertime, but also visiting some of our other attractions and things. You can look forward to seeing that on Thursday night at 5:00, 6:00, and 10:00, and then on Friday night, I think, the early news times as well. Frozen River Film Festival's coming up, not this weekend, but the following weekend, and it's an amazing documentary film festival that if you haven't been there, you really should. It's well worth it, primarily at Winona State, but it'll be at the Cine7 Theaters and other places in town as well, and it's all online, frozenriverfilmfestival.com. The Historical Side is having an open house this Sunday. It's our way of saying thank you to the community, and free admission, noon to four. I hope people take advantage of that. There's lots of activities, especially for kids, and come on down. Also want to mention that I did have a conversation today with the postmaster in Winona, and I was assured this morning that the postmaster, that the door on the front of the post office is going to be, at least temporarily fixed tomorrow, and within the next four weeks, the handicap accessibility and all the repairs to the doors are going to be done. So I'm pleased to be able to say that, and hopefully on March 6th or before, we'll see that done. And those were the announcements that I wanted to make tonight, and I'll ask the city manager if he has anything.
Just one update, Your Honor. Employees and interns for the city. Six part-time firefighters started on January 3rd this year. We have a new maintenance, wastewater maintenance worker, Jacob Tej. He started on January 30th, came down from Alaska. We have three interns, Bryce Lang and James Merrick are both working in community development, and Sidney Farmer is working with our dementia-friendly community project over at the Friendship Center. And also let you know that Brent Bunky has been promoted to water superintendent pending the retirement of our current superintendent.
I should mention, too, that Myrna Olson has retired after thirty-nine years with the city, and I just, we had a little ceremony here recently, but I want to publicly say, too, that Myrna did a great job for so many different city managers and mayors over the years, and thirty-nine years of great service, and thank you for your service. Roll call?
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Thurly.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Ayden.
Here.
Porzakowski.
Here.
Schoelmeier.
Here.
Under the petition's request and communications, item 3.1 is the sign and banner schedule for the first half of the year. I would note that we did implement the new fee for the banners and signs, and each of the applicants has paid the fee.
And move approval of the list.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry.
Item 3.2 is the license agreement and temporary liquor licenses for the Midwest Music Fest to be held April 28th and 29th. Would know to change this year. They are looking to have their tent stage at the municipal parking lot at the corner of Second and Center. They will also have the stage at the Masonic.
And move approval of their request.
I'll second it. Okay. Michelle moved, Kerry seconded. Parker Purcell is here with the director. That's your title of the Midwest Music Festival?
Director.
And if you have questions for him, or anything you wish to say, Parker?
No, just thank you for letting us use the parking lot again, and...
We haven't voted on it yet.
Oh, I thought...
No, we just, both of us just agree that it's a good idea right over here. Now you gotta see the big thing.
We're getting to it.
All right, well, fire away.
Any questions for Parker? George?
Anything new this year as entertainment venue at all, or?
Well, the one, we are using Island City Brewing Company, the new brewery this year, which is going to be open by the time, so we're excited about that, and that's one of the reasons for trying to use that other parking lot, is so that it's more continuity with the way the traffic would flow around town. And the other reason is we noticed that the lot was quite small in terms of, we had the food trucks in there, and trying to get a beer tap or trailer in there, we had some issues with trying to just move things around, and then the electricity, we had to kind of get electricity off the Eagles Club, and I know there's already electricity there in that parking lot, so it would make it easier for us.
Anything else? No, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. No, you got your parking lot.
And item 3.3 is an application for an on-sale brewer taproom, and off-sale small brewer taproom liquor licenses for Island City Brewing Company. Colton Altabell and Thomas Rodenkin are the applicants, and I believe Colton is here, if you have questions.
I'd make a motion to approve all of our licenses.
I would second that.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Discussion? Well, I'm excited you have your federal license, and moving forward, and look forward to the big opening. I think it'll be a great thing for downtown Winona. I guess we can vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 3.4 is a request for St. Martin's Strawberry Festival in Sinclair Park on Sunday, June 11th.
Move approval of that request. Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 3.5 is the HMS Global Maritime Request for Docking of the American Duchess on July 25th, and the American Queen on August 8th and August 12th.
Move approval of that request.
Second. Motion by Michelle, seconded by Al. I'm sure in here you meant that they're going to close Levy Drive and not Levy Park.
I assumed that was the case.
I'm just assuming that.
I think they own us in the park.
Yes.
Okay. George?
The request here for water, if that's from us, I presume we sell that to them, correct?
I'm not sure we do. Monica, do you know?
I don't recall.
Fifty thousand gallons, okay.
Maynard knows.
Mayor and council, when they come, they actually hook up, the water department hooks it up right there. We have potable water, and we don't charge them. It is metered, though.
Okay.
Anything else? Well, it's good to have the boats back, and my understanding is that in 2018, we're going to see a lot more boats, more stops of the American Queen, American Duchess, the French Cruise Lines, Louisiana will be here, so should be a busy waterfront, 2018. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 3.6 is a request to hold the Miles for Smiles Walk at Lake, the West Lake. It'll be hosted by Ridgeway Community School on Saturday, June 3rd.
Move to approve that request.
Second. Motion by George, seconded by Kerry. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 3.7 is the license agreement for boats and bluegrass to be held the weekend of September 23rd. The agreement would be September 18th through the 25th to allow for setup, and I believe Tom and Julia are here, if you have questions.
And move approval of the license agreement.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. One comment that I have is that it seems like every year I get a phone call about duck hunters wanting access to the landing there, and you have been very accommodating with them. I'm just wondering if there's some way we can address that without getting another phone call the night before, and having to track you down, and chat, and...
Yeah, members of council, yeah, it really comes down to logistical issues. There's really not room when we're set up in there, that, and, you know, there's a thousand canoeers out there, so it's just really not an ideal location for them that weekend. So, you know, we have in the past always worked with people if they're determined to get in there, but it's, you know, it's logistically kind of hard with all of our infrastructure that we put in there to allow, you know, we've got eighty canoes at the landing there. So, you know, I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, I think we deal with it through the council action, which is closing it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well...
But, I mean, you know, like I said, we've always worked with people, and we're not, you know, when they're coming in, in the morning, you know, we're not, we don't have staff personnel at the roadway there, so they're in and out if they can make it in there.
It's like four people, I think they go out there, they spend the whole weekend, and...
Yeah.
It's fine, I understand, you know, they go way beyond any area that you are using.
I wouldn't want to pull a boat trailer in there over the weekend, but...
No. Okay, well, maybe we call you again, I don't know.
There's, you know, many other launching ramps, too, if they want to stay in their pool, but have you had any major incidents with anything, or?
Not at all, no. No.
So McNally is, you know, just right around the corner there, is it about rent, is it about parking their trailer, or is it...
No, I think it's access. I mean, that, my understanding was those other landings didn't work for where they wanted to go.
Well, McNally's in a different pool, but...
Yeah, there's a spillway there.
Dix and Prairie Island Landing would get access relatively quickly.
Yeah, there's other ways they can get in that pool.
Yeah, yeah, there's a number of different landings, so...
And maybe if they come from out of town, maybe that's the only one they know that they can access.
No, they're locals.
Or they are local.
Features of habit.
Yeah.
Maybe that, I don't know, I'm just bringing it up.
Yeah, yeah, it is, it is kind of usually typically the only issue that...
Put some signs up, and direct them someplace else.
All right, maybe I'll call them ahead of time.
Sure.
All right. Well, any other questions for Tom? Nat will vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 3.8 is the updated status of the Winona City Dog Park. Maynard is here to address that.
Animal Control Services?
Oh, no, no, 3.8.
I have it here, I'm on order.
Right.
I missed it. Okay. We have an update here of the animal, the dog park. Maynard, do you want to share a summary of this?
Yeah, I can. I think the press has put a little bit in there, but just a little bit of background, we went back previously and had a little public forum, and specified that we would actually have it. We went through a few opportunities or proposals that we wanted to go through with the council, and we ended up with the Prairie Island area. So I did a little background, and I think we've done most of that. There's a 4.8 acre set aside for that proposed dog park area after the mitigation that was done a number of years ago for the harbor project, and we put together a fence that's, well, it'll be a bigger fence in that 4.8 area, and then a smaller fence, and then a double fence type thing, so that when dogs get in there, and they can go into the small area, the big area, and there'll be a little area, a queuing area, so that other dogs don't get out. So what we've kind of done is looked at the site, as many of you know, that site already is being used for the ashbore situation and burn. That actually will be moved closer towards the dog park, and then be burnt down at that area until we no longer need to use that. We've talked about that, and we can coexist, both of us, at the same time. In talking with the city attorney previously, that it was thought to be, should be, a city-owned dog park and not an association situation, and we've looked at Winona Agency, and our insurance would cover that with our blanket. Kind of just going through, we were asked and told, or asked, whatever you want to say, not to go ahead with fundraising until after the Humane Society did their fundraiser, and that got done in December, so we're carrying up to do that at the same time. There's a number of people, and I've talked to a few of them, that we are going to meet in February to start planning for a fundraiser. We've got lists from both the chamber type list, and we've got from the Winona Centennial Celebration, that list, we've got from Steamboat Day's list, that will send out fundraisers. I must, I know they've already put a little bit about the fundraiser in the paper, and I'm going to guess that they'll put some more in there, but we've also opened up at Winona Community Foundation, a place where we can actually put our funds and things. So if you want to put together some funds, go ahead, and you can send it to the Winona Community Foundation, and earmark it for the dog park, and you're there. Right now, we haven't really pushed for that, but there is a hundred dollar donation already in there, so anybody that wants to donate, anytime that hears this, or council, or whatever, can go ahead and do that as well. Our strategy, I hope, is that we can get that dog park going as fast as we can. If I told you how long I've been working on this, you'd probably say, why haven't we had it? We've had all kinds of situations throughout the time it's been there, it's time for us to get going and have it. My hope is that we would raise the money. We anticipated we needed about fifty thousand dollars. We have ten thousand in the 2017 budget earmarked for it, so we hope to make enough money so that come spring or early summer, we'll be able to have a dog park. We've got figures and those things for the fence. We've also talked to some of the people about the fence, local people, the fence and benches and other things needed, and I think that's been positive as well. So I don't know what else I can say other than that, but donate your funds. Any other questions? Go ahead, Al.
Couple of questions. You mentioned a fundraiser, I assume if it's through the Winona Community Foundation, those donations are tax deductible?
Yes, they are. In fact, I have it down here in the last paragraph, says donations are tax deductible, and hopefully that'll be passed on through the, we'll put it on the website, we'll have it on Facebook, we'll have it on other locations, news, whatnot, so...
I just wanted to have you mention that during your presentation.
Good, good man, thank you.
Now, is the, is the dog park, once it's up and running, is that, is there a fee associated with using that?
That's what we're discussing as well. There won't be a fee probably, but you have to have your dogs licensed in order to go in there. That'll be a little bit on the honor situation, because we can't have somebody at the gate all the time, but they're pretty well self-patrolled and go from there.
Okay, thank you.
And, which means they have to have shots and everything else. Go ahead, Paul.
The parking area, 140 by 30, is that sufficient? People can back out and turn around there?
It's what we have right there. The only, the other option, the other option is there's, right across the street is the Kiwanis Shelter, so they could park there. We've talked to the Core in years past, things have changed with the Core now, but in the past, we even talked about maybe putting some fill, a little bit along the roadside there to make a little parking area there along the road. I don't think they're going to allow us to do that, so, okay? Good question.
Kerry?
Kerry.
I'm 100% in favor of a dog park, Maynard. You know I always have been, so I hope this one is going to be successful, even though I think it's just a ridiculous location, but I've already told you that for decades anyway.
Yep.
So let's see what we can do in this location.
And remember, this is the location we're starting with.
Well, yeah.
And we'll see what happens from there.
My concern is, and it's a legitimate concern, if this location is not the best location, and it's not well attended, then it will negatively affect any future locations. That's another real issue.
If I...
But it's the one we got, so that's what we're going to roll with.
And if I were being a betting person, which I'm not, that will be quite full.
It should be, Maynard, because it's your idea.
It's not just because of that. There's other people already, if you notice, people have been going in there already, so people have made comments and things like that. The biggest thing they want is to make sure there's a fence there, so, okay? Anything?
Okay, well, thank you, Maynard.
Yep, thanks.
And next to new business, the agreement with the Winona Area Humane Society for Animal Control Services.
And make a motion to approve the attached agreement and to authorize administration to sign.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Discussion? Hearing none?
Mayor?
Okay, go ahead.
Chief, just one question. Like on weekends, if a resident needs to contact the animal control officer, I see she's listed here in our agenda, and everyone does not have that phone number, what is their avenue?
Just call the law enforcement center? Excuse me, and our dispatchers can usually get ahold of an officer, or the on-duty sergeant decides if we need the animal control officer to come out, or they'll handle the call. And we do have part-time backup animal control as well, people that fill in for that.
Okay.
So if any of Maynard's dogs get out of the park on a weekend, we'll be able to deal with it.
All right, we'll load who to call, so...
Let's just have a question.
Any other questions?
Guess Nat? Thank you. Any further discuss, questions? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes.
Item 5.2 is a temporary work easement.
I'd make a motion to stop the temporary work easement and attach reservation.
I'll second that.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Paul?
Yeah, so how long will the sand be there? Will that interfere with any potential developments, or what?
Who can answer that question? Lucy?
Lucy.
Yes, Mayor and council, so this particular item is to use the East End Boat Harbor for the access to have the trucks, have the sand loaded, and to use that boat ramp for this. The Port Authority approved having the sand placed at Technology Park at their last meeting, and typically there's quite a demand for the sand, and it's utilized on local development projects, so I think that we'll be fine with it.
Thank you.
Pam?
Have there been complaints about this in the past? I know we've done this for several years running, allowing, the fact that the landing is closed during the week.
Yes, you know, we don't have a lot of options in this particular case, and I think that they've had a pretty good working relationship with the people who have boat houses, and in particular, keeping it open during the weekends, so...
And I had another question regarding the placement of the sand, the fill, on the Technology Park. Is this going to affect the way the water runs off into the two retention ponds, which are strategically located to handle that?
We haven't had issues with that in the past. I could meet with city engineer Brian DeFrang and discuss that with them, but...
Oh, so these are not new areas? These have been used before?
They've been used before.
Thank you, Lucy.
Anything else? We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes.
Item 5.3 is the food truck ordinance.
I'd make a motion to introduce the ordinance.
I'll second.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Kerry. Discussion? Pam?
I have, I have many questions about this ordinance and the way, the way it's structured, and I would, I think that it's, I just have a feeling it's not organized quite as well as we might do. It feels to me like we are, we are restricting kind of food trucks in some places and not in others, and I don't quite understand the logic of it. So I'm not prepared to vote for this tonight, the way it is. I would like to, for one thing, I'd like to discuss why the lake park vendors don't need a fixed restaurant while the Third Street vendors do. If it's a matter of healthy food, I think the people at the lake should have healthy food as well. I understand that the vendors at the, at the lake park could use more like hot dogs and microwave sandwiches and that sort of thing. And I just don't understand why they're allowed not to have a fixed restaurant while Third Street vendors do, and we do have, we do have the drive-in right across the road there, so there is some competition. So that's one question. I have, just have quite a few questions, like why, why are we just doing this on Third Street? Why not Second? Why not other streets in town? Why are there just 21 days allowed from March to October that these permanent, or these food trucks can be on Third Street? So those are, those are some of my concerns, and I just feel like I don't understand why we're, we're structuring it the way it is, Mayor.
Monica?
Maybe I'll give an overview of why we're doing this. For the past eight years, we've had what's called a license agreement with Rubio's to operate in a specific area, and it's more limited, they only had two-block area of Third Street. We've had a few calls over the years, and we do have a vendor from another city who would like to operate here, but because we don't have it in the ordinance, each time a new vendor wants to come in, we have to bring you the proposal, and you vote on them for, you know, an agreement at a time. When the Winona Eats proposal was brought to you to operate at Lake Park last summer, was the first time, we felt that since they were only operating at Lake Park and not in downtown, and they do operate quite a distance away from other restaurants, that having a restaurant in the city may not be required, and the council did approve that. So I think by putting everything in, in the code book, everyone will understand and be operating under the same rules. So what we did when we were drafting this ordinance is we took the current license agreement that we had, and looked at other cities' ordinances, and merged the two, so in essence, everything that Rubio's has been operating under is in this ordinance. So, for example, they are limited to only operating on Third Street and a certain area by the Banshell and Lake Park. If you wish to open that up, we can draft, have a wider zone. The 21-day limitation about how, how long you can operate in one location is actually in the state law pertaining to food trucks. So that, that was the starting point that we, and if you want to change any of those, we can make amendments to the draft ordinance.
Paul?
Is one location park, that's it, or is one location that two-block stretch, or that area?
So typically, they will set up for the duration of the day, or, you know, they don't have to move every two hours, so it would be this day they would operate, you know, at, at one, in one parking spot, but they would not be limited. If they wanted to move, they could, but they would just need to find the parking space. You're talking in downtown.
Yes.
Yeah.
George?
I had an opportunity to meet with Monica this morning, and just a question that I have is, you know, I understand the food trucks and things, but now these wood-fired pizza makers, or whatever you want to call it, vendor, they don't have a truck. I mean, they carry their equipment, but they need to set their stuff up outside, and I feel there should be some sort of a placement for these people to operate as well, too. I know we talked about... And I know we talked about private property, and, you know, we talked about Third Street and all that, but just what is the, you know, what's council's take as far as a wood-fired pizza vendor that, you know, they, they cook them in the oven? I know they have it during the car show. I seen them a couple of times there, and they appear to do, you know, okay. I think they should maybe have a, a foot in this as well, too. Michelle?
I would be less comfortable with that. I think that type of setup works really well with steamboat days, or the big muddy, or an actual event. But the idea of having open cooking without some type of structure around it in a downtown area for hours would concern me. It'd be like having our barbecue teams just come to sell their barbecue and just set up the grill right there on the sidewalk or on the street. I would be less comfortable with that. And I think that would be a different ordinance even, because it's not really mobile food trucks. I mean, I don't know how we would, how we would do that. Most fire pizza places I'm familiar with have a fixed location with the structures separate from the eaters, and I, I guess that would be my take on it. I don't think it's quite the same as someone giving a hot dog versus open flame in downtown or anywhere else, really. I don't know how anyone else feels about that.
I agree. Jerry?
Why Third Street? Mostly because that's where we've had two in the past, and another one recently wanted to go down there, and that's where the foot traffic is. So it's the late-evening crowd, the bar crowd, so to speak. So that's where it really is, you know, they're not up on Sioux Street, and you're...
No.
Fortunately, we don't have the foot traffic, so it's no need for it. And it could always expand if people wanted it, and it's, but why Third Street? That's kind of the epicenter for it. Why the, the brick-and-mortar? That was really brought up by some of the brick-and-mortar folks who felt that it was unfair competition, that they didn't have a lot of overhead. They can bring in this vehicle, and here I'm paying taxes. What taxes are they paying to the city who's regulating this? So therefore, we said it should be tied into a brick-and-mortar in the city where they're also paying equivalent taxes, which, which helps. But I do have one concern about this. We used to have a limit, or if it wasn't a limit, it was just kind of a, it wasn't official limit, it was a limit we were kind of shooting for. We had two in the past, and we always said, there wasn't a third one even requesting at the time, and we kind of said, okay, it's the U2, and one more. Well, it never became one more. But we very easily could get, you know, we're gonna have that one repeat. Rubio's always comes back. And right now, we have at least one more attempting to come in. So if anything, we should probably entertain at least one amendment on this to limit it at whatever the number council agrees. But we, before, we were looking at a three limit for the downtown area. Now, keep in mind, we only ever hit two, because maybe that's saturation point. But it should have a limitation.
George? Now, how would this affect private property? And for an example, we could say, you know, warehouse liquor, or back of Mulligan's Pub, or any other different, back of VFW Club, whatever. How would, how would these vendors be affected if they were on private property? Carlos?
So if these were on private property, if it was a food truck, it could, it would have to be licensed in accordance with the ordinance, and it would be permitted. The hours would be different. It would only be allowed from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. That would be the limit.
But what if the establishment was open longer than 10?
The limit would be 10, as stated in the ordinance.
Michelle?
Quick question, or procedural one on the ordinance itself, on page two, item 9A, it talks about a certificate of insurance, and it talks about a limit of not less than $1 million. And then in parentheses, it's $1,500,000. Is the intent $1,500,000 or 1 million?
I believe it's 1.5 million.
Okay, then it should be modified, then, to include that in the, in the verbiage prior to the numbers.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, you know, and, and Councilman Craig's comment is well-intended, but, but as far as limiting the numbers, I think, from my perspective, I, I'd really like to see the free market work in this case. If, if there's a, a demand for this kind of service, and all of the requirements are met, I, I, I guess I couldn't really see myself voting for something that would limit someone's opportunity if, again, they meet all the requirements.
Actually, we already have downtown. We had a limitation or moratorium.
Right. And, and that was an issue for me as well.
Yeah. But the precedent had been set. A limitation on liquor licenses oftentimes comes up, and your argument is what's met with it, and I agree on that. But we're talking a true finite area. I could see both sides of it. I'm just stating that that's what we had brought up before. We had a, I don't really know if it was an official limitation. We were just always saying, at least we discussed continuously, let's have a limit of three, a limit of three. And since only two kept coming to us, it never became a reality. So maybe we address it when it happens, I don't know. But I thought it might be, if, if it, if it's voted down, it's voted down. Right now, it's not even an amendment.
George? Are we just talking now, what if someone comes from out of town and they have a fixed kitchen? Are, are they allowed to operate their, their food wagon on Third Street or anywhere in town?
So the way the ordinance is drafted, if you wish to operate on Third Street, you would need to have the fixed restaurant in the city. That's the way the ordinance is drafted.
And keep in mind why that is. So it's somewhat of a equal ground in competition. Remember what happened before when they started coming in? We had a sandwich shop downtown who was very concerned, and they were the ones that brought it up. I don't have, they don't have the same overhead that I do. And when actually, the, the two that were here did. But it was a good discussion, that's why we decided back then, and we're now putting an ordinance for them. If you're gonna compete against the people that are paying regular real estate and business taxes, you're gonna have to pay them elsewhere. This is just an addition to what you already have in the city.
But yet, we have an exception for that in the case of Lake Park.
Yes. I think at Lake Park, we're lucky to have one vendor. If we get a lot of vendors attempting to do that, we might want to revisit it, but we're just kind of lucky at that particular one.
Pam?
I'd like to make an amendment. I'd like to offer an amendment to this, and that is that we, the vendors that, that up here, or who are down on Lake Park, right on the lake, that they post prominently post, post a sign that, that, that their customers are not supposed to feed the wildlife. This has happened, this has happened last year. People would be buying their snacks, and then, and then feeding the very ducks and geese that we are trying to get rid of at Lake Park. So we're trying to discourage geese from, from leaving their own litter on the, our sidewalks, meanwhile, we're feeding them. So it's just a matter of not having one part, one, the city work with two hands, that's all. I'd like to amend the, the ordinance.
Is there a second to?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second by Paul. Further discussion of the amendment? Yeah? Yeah, you know, it, it, it's a good idea. I don't think we can tell people what they can do with the product they purchase after they purchase it. But we can, we, my understanding is, you know, we can recommend, and maybe that's the...
Excuse me, I meant that we should require signage, prominent signage.
Signage.
So they just have a sign on their truck saying, "Don't feed the, don't feed the geese." I might have misspelled.
No, no, I think that's what you said, but I see what you heard.
Healthy Lake Winona has had a sign created already that's a very attractive, informative sign that would not be obtusive at all. Could be worked, it worked in really well magnetically.
Okay. I think it's a good suggestion, people. As long as you're not requiring it. George?
They have a sign down behind the hospital by the East End Fishing Pier, and people are there every day feeding the ducks.
Really?
I'm telling you, we have a local who had a great suggestion, that we waive the fee for anyone who will serve goose burgers. Just saying. Just a suggestion.
That was a good suggestion.
Good old Helen. She's always thinking.
Any other discussion on the amendment? If not, we'll vote on it. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Amendment passes.
I'll move for one more amendment, that in the Third Street downtown location, we limit the number to three.
Is there a second to that amendment?
I'll second it.
Second by Paul. Discussion? Michelle?
I would be very concerned about the legality of that. I feel like we might run into some problems with that. I could be wrong, but I, I feel like we're almost at the edge by requiring them to have brick-and-mortar, but I feel comfortable, because our attorney looked at it. But I don't think that we can say, oh, we're only gonna allow these three to operate here. I, I'm just, just guessing. I don't know if our attorney has anything to say about that, but I would be uncomfortable with that.
Just so happens that here.
Hey, look at that, Chris.
Mayor and Council, I think, I, I don't think we could, we could pick the three, but I think you could establish a maximum number, and then, I guess it would be first come, first served, in terms of who puts in an application for a license, and we would only, we would only grant three. So I think you could, I think you could establish a maximum number, but I think you, you would have to set some sort of process in terms of, you know, if there's more than three, how do they get selected?
So you mean, like, the first three applications come in, and if Rubio's has been there for eight years, too bad if there's a fourth? That kind of thing?
That's what would probably happen, yes.
And that was my attempt, and I should have explained why the motion, and why it was discussed before. It's really for the existing businesses that sell food on Third Street. You know, to them, one is too many. Four definitely will be too many. So that's where a, well, we should have a limit down there. So again, this is not, I'm not trying to either benefit or not benefit any particular food or concession truck. It is the existing businesses downtown that are in there, then, competing against them or with them. So that's, that's the rationale.
Al, I guess... I just wanted to reiterate my previous comments about the idea of enterprise and marketplace, and, you know, we, I don't know if we're in the business to protect one business over another. Okay, Michelle?
And I guess I would just add to that, that in my experience, most of the downtown businesses are closed by 10, and what we're suggesting is that most of these mobile trucks are looking to start serving at 10. So I feel like the majority of the conflict is already nonexistent. And because our ordinance states that they must have a specific area so many feet from a brick-and-mortar business, that I, like Al, too, think that competition is good.
Well, I, too, agree with Al. I'm gonna not support the motion. I think free market should decide.
I'm really warm by having all you conservatives go against me on this, when I'm, this is nice.
Conservatives.
You know, as the Levy project moves forward, as business picks up downtown, you know, would be an opportunity to revisit this, you know, and, and open it up to a larger number. But I, I, I see them probably making requests to be on Levy Park at some point in the future, as that becomes more of a popular destination.
Okay, George?
I'm gonna join the conservatives.
You guys are talking me into voting against Alan?
Any other, any other comments? I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Whoops.
I meant that.
This is the amendment?
This is the amendment.
Amendment, sorry. Sorry.
Okay, we'll allow it to be redone, otherwise, I just won.
On the amendment.
Thank you.
Aye.
Okay, opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, I had that messed up. Motion fails. Now, anything else on the motion, the original motion? Just a quick question. I probably asked this before, it's been answered before, but how does the food truck ordinance affect other community celebrations in the downtown, like steamboat days? We just, you know, talked about Midwest Music Festival, things like that.
Right. The intent is, this deals with food trucks. For events like steamboat days and Midwest Music Fest, when they have the food vendors come in, that quite often, they're trailers that are not, they don't meet the definition of a mobile food truck. So because they're, they set up, they're, you can't just drive them away. They're a little more stationary. But the intent would be, if they have a license agreement from the city that allows them to bring in food vendors, they would not have to be licensed under this. So for example, the wood-fired pizza, if they're part of an event, and they have a safe area where they're operating, they would be permitted.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Other questions before we vote? I think we're ready. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? What carries?
And now, on to item 5.4, the Masonic Temple rigging replacement. This was the topic of the pre-council, and Chad is here to review the presentation so that you may ask questions when he's done.
Mayor and Council, a little less awkward, I think, up here. Let's see if we got this working yet. Doesn't appear to. So Lee, I'll ask you just to flip through, please. So as I mentioned in the pre-council, you have a decision before you tonight as it relates to the rigging system, and ultimately, the, the drops within the Masonic Temple. So as it relates to the multipurpose arts venue, you should a restoration of some of the Masonic Scottish Rite drops be, be a consideration. And then, two, if they are considered, then is the choice to restore sets of drops or main bracket drops of more importance. So the answer to either of these questions affects the strongest choice of the rigging system. And so really, these are the two decisions that we believe face the council tonight. I mentioned in the pre-council meeting that I think it's important to recognize what the council has done with the Masonic Temple to date, and that the idea of restoring the building is important, and that the historic preservation of that building is important as well, and that we, in fact, are preserving the building. You've allocated over a half-million dollars to secure the roof, and really make the building watertight, as it should be, and do those structural components that needed to be in place within the second floor, those support beams on the second floor. Again, you heard a pre-council tonight about the bond issue, and the 4.9 million-dollar bond being proposed, that you've already given tentative approval for. That includes 1.8 million dollars for upgrades to make the building more usable in the future. Again, simply to recognize that we're taking steps to preserve this building. And then again, the central themes, I think, are important to discuss again tonight. And really, that first central theme is opportunity, Winona. That's this concept of an arts district, a corridor, again, has been talked around near and around Fifth and Main, where the Masonic Temple is located. Certainly, we would consider the Masonic Temple in this arts district or corridor. And then you have the proposal from Hurry Back Productions, which we see as a catalyst for downtown economic development. Of course, within that building, and then, of course, in adjacent properties near the building. So other development in the downtown could be realized with this proposal from Hurry Back. And of course, it also has financial incentives for the city to repurpose this building. So a multipurpose arts venue, certainly, as you heard from the proposal from Hurry Back, and the city's intent is that we want to keep the lights on in this building. And what we mean by that is we want this building to be used to its fullest capacity. The city, and certainly Hurry Back, want to continue to partner with our current users. And again, as I indicated in the slide previous, as relates to historic preservation, the city investments currently in this building should lead to a multipurpose arts venue. So again, to recap, on June 20th of 2016, the city received a proposal from Hurry Back Productions. The intent of that proposal that was brought forward was repurpose second and third floor of the Masonic Temple as a multipurpose arts venue, to create a fully programmed space with events year-round. Again, financial support is matched with... Again, financial support is matched with city commitments, and the facility enhancements are intended to serve a variety of uses. So at that time, you directed staff to begin drafting agreements with Hurry Back Productions. And again, everything that we've mentioned on this slide assumes that we can reach an agreement with Hurry Back. We have not reached an agreement yet, and our negotiations certainly have stalled. The rigging system and drop review, again, just a little bit of history on recent history of the Masonic Temple. So we did receive a rigging report in 2014. It showed component degradation and failure, and the drops were removed for protection. We also received December of 2014, a historic structures report. HSR clearly stated a high priority for the city should be to review the rigging beam and its capacity and determine a restored or replacement rigging system. So again, we've talked all along about restoration, replacement, or dismantle certainly would be an option. So before I get into the details of the current status of the drops, again, for those of you that haven't seen the drops, this is just a really rough review of one of the drops. And I hope I highlight really what is a series of issues with all of the drops in their current state. So one of the issues, as was pointed out in the 2010 report from Velasina, is that we do have sagging, or the drops are no longer taut as they should be, so we do have some of the canvas curling. We have streaks, really that I guess could be easily defined as dirt. Those aren't shadows. We did have a leak, or the Masonic Temple had a leak in the roof, so the drops have water damage, again, on each side of the drops. Of course, the water sat near the bottom of the drop, so the battens do show some, I guess to use the term rotting of the battens, and again, you see the water staining on the bottom of the drops. The only thing that really doesn't shown in this image is, and I'm sure I missed in a few others, I think one of the other important factors of the current drops is some of the theatrical netting that is used in the cut drops would need replacement. This is an example of just a full backdrop. So again, the drops are, of course, in temporary storage on the stage. That was completed in 2014. This is temporary storage. Again, it's been indicated to the city that temporary storage really should not last more than five years. Again, in 2010, when the restoration evaluation was done, 95% of the drops were in poor condition. And the estimated cost to restore the 97 drops in 2010 was approximately $750,000. Now again, through 2010 theatrical, we did receive a proposal for permanent storage. That estimated cost is $90,000. Based in the context of this discussion, that would assume or presume that the drops would need a new location. So Mr. Mayor would point out to you that, I know this is not a public hearing, but Wendy from Velasina is here, so if you have questions about permanent storage or the market of the drops, she's here to answer questions. I don't have to try and look back at that report and get those answers. So if you have specific questions, again, I understand it's not a public hearing, but if you'd like to call her up, she's certainly willing to answer questions. So this led to the city conducting the study, the rigging study with Miller Dunwoody. And really, what we asked Miller Dunwoody to look at as it relates to the rigging system is the structural impact of the space if we restore or replace, the functional impact if we restore or replace the rigging system, and of course, the financial impact of a restored or replaced system. So the decision on the rigging system and drop needs to be made to move forward, in our opinion with Hurry Back Productions. It's going to be, so then we have these two central questions again. Is this going to be a fully functioning, multipurpose venue, and are the drops restored a piece of that multipurpose venue? So as was presented by Miller Dunwoody on January 30th in a pre-council meeting, they presented to the council, and again, it's attached in your packet, they presented five options for the city to consider as it relates to the rigging system. The first option, they called Option A, was a full restoration of all 97 drops. And again, that has been described to you now by two entities, both Thurn and Schuler and Shook have described this as a theatrical museum. We feel this negatively impacts Hurry Back Productions and their proposal. This option does not make an accommodation for an acoustic shell, so it's not possible to have an acoustic shell in this option. Again, staff is not recommending you consider this option. So again, as I mentioned in the pre-council, this is an image of the drops prior to them coming off the rigging system. And again, I mentioned this is the front of the stage, all the way to the back of the stage. Again, this is where the 98 originally hung. This picture was with the 97 drops. We are talking about a restrictive space. So as I mentioned, the Page Theater at St. Mary's is much larger than this space, certainly has wing space more than the Masonic Temple area. The Performing Arts Center at Winona State is a much larger space than this space that we're discussing tonight. Again, much larger wing space in those areas. So every inch, when we talk about three inch on center or six inches on center for the rigging system, literally every inch of space matters. The, Miller Dunwoody provided a second option, and of course, they called it Option B. This is a combination of multipurpose line sets and historical drops. In this option, they dedicated 25 line sets to the historical drops. Again, each line set that is not multipurpose takes up space. We feel it adversely impacts the flexibility of the space and the multipurpose intentions. For example, Option B does not accommodate for an acoustic shell, and again, staff is not recommending you consider this option. Option C, the third option they presented, is a combination of multipurpose line sets and historical drops. Again, this option has 10 dedicated historical drop line sets. As I described before, those are, in this option, are in sections of three. What that means is three drops could be in the first section, three drops could be in that second section, and four drops could be in the third section. So that's where you get that total, obviously, of 10. Again, we feel that the flexibility of the space always is impacted when you dedicate, you know, those line sets that are not multipurpose. This option, however, does accommodate for acoustic shell, and it is possible to have an acoustic, it is possible to have an acoustic shell in this option. Again, in totality, staff is not recommending that you consider this option. The rigging study did indicate that their fourth option is D. This would include 16 multipurpose line sets. This obviously presents the most flexibility for the desired variety of programming. There are options within Option D to hang the historical drops, so it's not necessarily suggesting they go away. This option does accommodate for an acoustic shell. And again, as we mentioned earlier, staff is recommending this option to council tonight. Miller Dunwoody did, before I get to this next slide, Miller Dunwoody did suggest an Option E. We did not provide this in the presentation tonight. We do not think it's a viable option. That was to deadhang, a deadhang option. I think as we indicated in your council item tonight, we're not even recommending that as an option. As we talk about the drop restoration, and so if drops are chosen to be used in this space, again, we have the restoration estimate back from 2010. We were suggesting that that is approximately $7,000 per drop. If the council would choose Option C, to keep in mind that we are adding $60,000 to the rigging system to dedicate those line sets for the 10. We do have this question in front of us of what should be done with the remaining 80-plus drops if it is your option to choose 10. And again, if that means 96, 95, 94, 93, I think you get the point. It's the issue of what should be done with the remaining drops. Again, permanent storage is estimated at 90,000. And then we get into the further questioning of which drop should be restored. So again, if they're historic, should we be restoring the Masonic Scottish Rite specific drops, meaning certainly they were all used by the Scottish Rite? But again, do we save the ones that have more of a Masonic theme, or do we save the ones that, again, could have a theatrical use? In previous discussions, when Hurry Back's proposal came forward, we discussed with you in meeting with users of the space that the drops are used sporadically through a year, and so we feel both those options would see sporadic use. And again, in context of the restoration, we need to have some discussion about how the line sets would be addressed dimensionally for those drops that use multiple line sets. So as I mentioned in the pre-council, for example, there's been a lot of discussion about the forest wooded scene. Again, there are five line sets that make up this scene. There is a leg drop, one, two, three, four, cut drop, and a backdrop to equal five. And so this scene would need five line sets. And so then there's this discussion of, do we remove one line? Do we remove two lines to make this scene if that's the decision you'd like to move forward with? So there are some other discussions about that dimensionality in setting the scene. So again, staff is recommending Option D, too, as the preferred option as it relates to the multipurpose flexibility of the space. This allows for manual and motorized line sets. Again, we added the email in your packet from Schuler-Shook to add the additional cost for a manual motorized line set. It does add $40,000 to the proposal. And again, as I mentioned in the pre-council, if you have any questions about this, I can go in more detail, but we are not necessarily asking council to make a decision on that detail. That certainly can be vetted during design. And again, we feel this option provides the most flexibility for the use of the space. And again, as I mentioned before, if an Option D is chosen, again, it's always that context of what's the restoration cost based on the number that you prefer us to restore? And again, is there some permanent storage for the drops that are remaining? So with that, I'll open it up for questions.
Michelle?
I saw Paul here, so it reminded me of something he brought up quite a while ago. And I don't know if any of these plans take into account. Is it possible to double hang any of the drops in these plans? I don't know if they even looked at it, but I know that when he was talking about the restoration process for those rigging, he thought that they would be light enough to allow for it on the weight. I'm guessing with the new system it would, but I just don't know with the space constraints how thick it would be. Is that something that we could look at moving forward with a restoration process? That could be part of that question that's answered?
And the detail in design as well.
Okay.
My assumption would be that you're looking at Option C then with dedicated line sets. Because again, if you would start to double hang drops in D, then we start getting into that multipurpose line set ability is getting lost.
Okay.
And Michelle, if you double hang them, displaying the one that's in the back could inhibit the restoration that you've done. In other words, every time you move one, it's not such a good thing.
Okay, thank you.
Al?
Couple of questions, I guess, as I'm hearing this again for the third or fourth time, and I really do appreciate all of the input, I think all of us have had on council about this issue, because there was a certain passion about this facility among community members at least that have contacted us, and I appreciate that. You know, when we look at Option C and Option D, in one, in Option C, it talks about 10 historic drops. Where did that number, how was that number derived? Tell me how that came about 10 versus eight versus six versus five, for example?
The simple answer to that is mathematics and the dimensions of the stage. So Schuler-Shook did all of that work. We did not receive that raw data. Schuler and Shook looked at the dimensions of the stage and then determined, like in Option B, there was 25, doesn't accommodate an acoustic shell, here's your dedicated space within this dimensions of the stage. And so that's why it's not 19, 18, 12. It's, they did the dimensional work based on the feedback that we provided and said, all 97 is Option A, mathematics, dimensions, 25, mathematics, dimensions, 10. And of course, they did the option of D and E as well.
So then, in Option D, which you say here doesn't really have any of the drops flown, is that my understanding?
Dedicated line sets. In other words, spaced perfectly for the use of drops on closely.
So that they can be raised and lowered?
No, they can still be raised and lowered in D. They would not be spaced as tightly as possible because they weren't built just for the drops. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
In C, there are three line sets, three groups of line sets that are spaced as tightly as you can and still hang drops. In D, you have flexibility to use them however you want. So if you hang drops on them, fine, but if you don't, you could use all other types of scenery or lighting equipment or anything.
So that doesn't preclude, again, I'm sorry if I'm asking this question again, that doesn't preclude hanging the historic drops?
It doesn't.
Under D?
But once you hang the drops and they've been paid to be restored, you are dedicating that line set for the most part to that application.
And then the follow-up question is how do you determine for a performance space, you know, what is the most efficient use of the rigging system you have? And isn't that really determined by the types of performances you hope to have? Or would one limit the flexibility for the types of performance over another?
Can you ask that again, Al?
Sure.
I want to make sure I understand what you're asking.
Sure. You know, I think everyone would agree if we're going to go to the road, down the road of making this a very wonderful place for people to experience theater. How limiting would restricting, I mean, how, is there a formula that says, okay, if you're going to make this the most flexible place in the world, and you obviously don't have unlimited room, what's the maximum amount and number, given the dimensions that we talked about, to help make this an adequate space for performance to happen, no matter what might come down the line? I mean, I agree with the acoustic shells. I agree with the main curtains. I agree with the light pipes, obviously. But it's all of these details that I think I'm struggling with. I don't know about other members of council, that, you know, I would want to preserve the historic drops as many as are usable. I mean, you mentioned, you know, the interest in using them in other theatrical productions, and I think that's a wonderful idea. You know, I think we should use that as criteria versus other criteria because we want to make this as flexible as possible. But, you know, how do you determine what's the right number?
Option D is what Miller Dunwoody provided as the most flexible
Right.
option.
But if you
Allows for the most multipurpose venue space.
But I'm hearing as well from Lee that if you hang some of the historic drops on it, then you're going to limit that flexibility. So I just want to make sure I understand that properly.
I think, I think point blank, if you are asking that question in relation to what Hurry Back Productions proposed? asking that question in relation to what Hurry Back Productions' proposal is, or if you're asking what is a multipurpose event space look like with the dimensions we're in? I guess the best answer I can give you is 10 drops or less. I think anything over 10, we start getting into it negatively affects the functionality and flexibility of that space.
So in other words, if we said option D and we said preserve 10 of the historic drops?
Then I think what I would say to the council is if you are leaning toward 10 drops or less, or if you're really, if you're really leaning toward 10 drops, then really option C is something you should consider. So if the drop restoration is deemed significant and 10 is something that you think is important to save, restore, whatever term you want to use, then option C is the better option. But that's under that context.
I'm not saying, you know, 10 is a number, five is a number. I guess, I'm not, I'm not an expert in what those drops can or cannot be used for. I'm just asking for some, some ideas and thoughts and flexibility. And I see council person Scholmeyer has maybe some observations.
Well, I mean, so in line with this, if, if option D is chosen and the request is for eight or 10 drops, doesn't it actually just become option C? Because as Mr. Gunnersheimer said, that they, once they're hung, they're, they're hanging there, they're taking up the space.
Correct.
Which is why the two questions at the beginning are the most important. If it's important to save drops and still have a multipurpose venue, that's a decision. If it's not, then that's a decision too.
So if the answer to the first question is yes, then your recommendation to the second question would be D. Is that what you're hearing?
If you're considering restoring?
If we want multi-use, we want to keep the light of the building. Get Hurry Back in there, work with it, get that building used. But also try to preserve as many drops as possible. That would be, I believe we're hearing option D over and over.
Yep. Option D is an option that you have for some of the drops to be hung in that space.
And also provide a mixed use and keep the lights on.
Correct. If you are deciding though to save a number of drops that's getting closer to 10?
And you want the dimensionality.
And you want the ability to set scenes? Then I would say that really what we would recommend as staff would be then C.
Michelle?
I want to ask two blunt questions. Do we know 100% where we'd get funding for and how many drops are salvageable at this point? If they were in 2010, 95%, how many percent was poor?
Roughly 95% were rated in poor condition.
Okay, so that's my first issue. Because everything we do here is resting on what we can do with those drops, right? That's the holdup. But my more important question is, because I know we have a backer out there who wants to give 50% towards improvement of a building that we need to improve in order to even preserve the drops? What is the drop dead for them? That might help us all make this decision. Like, I, I think probably B is a no-go for Hurry Back. I need to know what the drop dead is for them to work with us here because I think that's what this issue becomes for us, is how do we keep them on board? Make it work as a multifunctional, but still maybe maintain some of the historic drops as part of that process. So I think, I don't, maybe I'm speaking for everyone here, but that's what I need to hear is what is that? It may not still not be the option I would vote for, but I want to know what it would be. Because I think I've said all along, without the building restoration, without the improvements to the building, the drops are irrelevant because we can't rehang them. We don't have a system and we don't have a process that allows for them to be hung safely. But right now, we have someone out there who's saying, hey, city, you're using taxpayer dollars here, let me put in private funding too to restore this, this building. Which then allows us to look at a restoration process for some of the drops, even if they're not all rehung there. So can you help me with that question?
I don't, I would go back to these are the responsibility of the city. And there are drops. It's a city decision on what we do. I think that any number above 10 seriously impacts any discussions we have with Hurry Back. Any number of 10, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one, affects what we want to do in that space. I don't have, I don't think, in my opinion, it's the responsibility of Hurry Back to tell us how many drops they think they think should be saved. That's a decision that we have to make. I think anything more than 10 negatively impacts our ability to negotiate.
That's what I want to know. I don't want them to tell me what to save because I don't think that's even, they're not interested in the drops and not everyone is. What I mean is how do I work with them and still maybe look at a couple drops? You know, how can we partner together without, I don't, you know, I know that's not their interest. But I'm trying to look at as a community as a whole. Because there are people who would still use the facility and use the drops in some number.
I think that if we choose any amount over 10, it'll make negotiations with Hurry Back more difficult.
Thank you.
George?
So option D, as is recommended, that gives the flexibility to Hurry Back in the city.
It does. But again, what we're looking from council is do you have an interest in saving more than one, two, three? Is it six, seven, eight? Is it closer to 10? Because that, again, if you're thinking that it's 10, then what staff would say is, well, actually, if it's 10, we're better off considering option C. Because it dedicates those lines and allows that dimensionality. We would be concerned that, and it takes up really the most, the least amount of space compared to option, option D. We need some input on that.
I guess I'd like to weigh in here a little bit and just say, you know, the first, I think, one of our first priorities here ought to be just making sure that we're working with Hurry Back and making sure that we've got an agreement with them as quickly as we can. I think we've got a tremendous opportunity here to partner with Hurry Back Productions to not only save the building, but to make some significant improvements to this building that is historic by itself. With that said, I think that the drops are an integral part of the building and its history and as far as the rationale for saving them, to me, that's, that's enough by itself. And I love these drops. I mean, I've been in love with these drops for over 20 years. And I just think that, you know, there is a use for them at some point. And you know, I don't know what that number is. I think most of us are hearing from people that, you know, we, we think that this proposal from Hurry Back is very important and an opportunity for the city. And also, you know, these drops are important and to try to save as many of them as we can. To me, the drops, the three dimensionality of the drops, you know, is so much tied in with those drops and what you're looking at that just hang a backdrop just doesn't do it. And I think, you know, if we can accommodate some number of drops, I don't know what that is. You know, I'm hearing 10 could work. But I think whatever that number is, I'd like to think that we can do them in some kind of a three-dimensional effect. To me, that's important.
Paul?
Well, thank you. What I've been hearing from residents is this is really kind of a key opportunity for the community to move forward. And what I want Mr. Sloggy to know is that there is an incredible amount of passion and emotion in regards to trying to save or, or restore as many drops as possible. We're responsible for having to make a decision that is an extremely difficult one that most of us have been struggling with for probably the last few weeks. So I just want that, that Mr. Sloggy should know that, that we're really making every single attempt we can to, to make this work for him. And that, and that the drops are really important. And, and, and we want it to work. And having as many as possible is, is really ideal. I also would like to explore the opportunity right off the bat, what, what the HPC asked in a memo that we received earlier, is hanging every single one as soon as we can and digitally photographing them so that we have them and we have a record of them going forward, no matter what happens.
Mayor and council, just to your last point, Paul, the drops have been digitally photographed. Once by the restorer, twice by the city, and a third time by a professional photographer. We set multiple scenes to capture, I feel comfortable saying 95% of the possible scenes, if not more, were shot by a professional photographer. And then, of course, all the digital records by the restorer and the city. So I feel like we have a very well archived photographic history of them. To your other point, I think, again, if I'm, I'm hearing that as many drops that can be saved as possible, I would just like to make a comment about the last, the first thing you said. I think that a plan for restoration, including the city's choice of drops, must be developed and funded. So we need to put together a restoration plan, if that's the direction you have. However, I don't think there should be staff time dedicated to a restoration plan until an agreement with Hurry Back Productions is in place, secured, and implemented. My concern is that if we continue to allocate time and resources to a restoration plan, that we increase the likelihood we'll lose our partner based on time. And I think that's important to note.
Well, if that's the case, I would make a motion. One last question, you said D or was, did you add a D2, D1?
Our original recommendation is D2. If, I guess what I'm hearing from some is that...
That's still prevailing as the staff recommendation at this point is D2.
Correct.
And I move that we move, we move forward with option D2.
Second.
Here we have a motion for D2 is the option by Jerry and seconded by Michelle. Further discussion?
Yes, could you give me an outline then of what D2 is? I can see what D is, what, what does D2 give us?
D2 provides 28 total line sets. That's eight curtains, four lighting pipes, 16 general purpose lines, and two line sets dedicated to an acoustic shell. Again, if you'd like us to, in that design, consider a number of drops to be restored, then I would need that direction. And again, I don't want to make it more complicated, but if, if you're going to direct us to restore some and it's getting close to 10, then really the option is C.
I would make an amendment to the motion to include up to 10 drops.
Second then?
I'll second.
How does that change D2?
Any, any number that starts to get close to 10, so if you're saying nine, you should probably go with C2.
But then that limits our potential to work with Hurry Back.
I think that impacts our discussions with Hurry Back.
I may say something. We've been working on this for a long time and you and your staff have been doing an exceptional job. And the longer we're at it, the more complicated it certainly becomes. But it's been a fear all along of many that in the event that we had somebody come in with a million plus dollars and say, let's fix them all, then we would have this beautiful piece of artwork that would hardly ever be seen or touched. Because from time to time, it would. Right now, we have to fix, fix as many as we can by still utilizing it. Instead of putting it behind someplace where it can never be seen. So however we come up with it tonight, it is very confusing. It sounds as if we all want the same thing. Let's work with Hurry Back, let's work with this organization and save as many as possible. And I certainly understand, Chad, that you're being incredibly careful tonight and not telling us what we are supposed to do. But it's being a bit confusing and I know that. If option D, D2, is the only one that is going to allow that and an amendment to bring it closer to 10 is going to kick that out, is that what you're saying? And please?
I am.
Blunt, we're going to need you to be blunt.
Any number of line sets dedicated to the drops, I feel impacts our ability to negotiate with Hurry Back. And so when you start getting close to 10, I think it's best we move away from option D and go to C. Where, where I know there's ambiguity is, we have, we, we can't up until this point negotiate with Hurry Back. So I feel that anything around, anything more than 10, I really think blunt, I, I would assume Hurry Back pulls the proposal if it's over 10. Again, 10 down to one, I, I understand it's, there's a lot of ambiguity in there. I'm concerned that when we go forward as a city to negotiate with Hurry Back, again, any number close to 10 impacts our ability to do that.
Okay, can I offer a suggestion to the amendment? Maybe you may want to clarify on the wording. It's certainly up to you, Paul.
It's already been seconded, but yes.
Well, we can still reword it. We can still reword it before it's voted on. You're stating up to 10? All right, it's still too close. Okay, thanks.
Can, can I ask a question? Is it possible to move forward with this proposal as stated here? Go into negotiations with Hurry Back and then come back to you and say, we want to have a restoration plan for as many as we can without stating the specific number? Because I think there's a lot of variables in that number. Not only because we don't know which scenes we might save or the cost of it, or, I mean, there's a large, there's the detail part of it that to me says, yes, we as a council do want to restore some. Do we have to say that number tonight? Does it have to be that specific? Or can we just make that part of the amended to say we want to restore some?
On the fly?
Yes.
I would, I would suggest you could direct staff to negotiate with Hurry Back Productions. The option C, as long as it doesn't negatively impact our decision to move forward. If C negatively impacts our decision, then we, then you'd say to staff, well, then you should negotiate something less than 10. And that, again, it's all under the caveat of that happens first before a restoration plan, before anything else happens, so that we don't have Hurry Back because of timing. Just say, you know what, I can't wait this long. I made a proposal back in June of 16. Which direction?
Can't we do that under D? With the amendment? I mean, instead of going back and redoing all, can't we just say that, make that part of the motion under D? Or is the reason you see C as more?
If you, if you slide up too close to 10, like nine, or 10, or even eight, it's a better use of the space to go ahead and dedicate the line sets closer.
And it would give you the three-dimensional effect.
So which is why we said the two decisions at the beginning are, if you really want those historic drops to be a part of this building, which we understand, then make that decision. Then decide whether dimensionality or the number affects choosing C or D.
Then I would just, I guess I would want to amend the motion and say to get as close to 10 as...
to 10 as possible in your negotiations with Hurry Back. Because I don't, I mean, I don't know that these other options are the, if, I think you would have recommended them if you thought these other options were the best option for the space. Am I correct?
And/or if we thought one of those options would have brought back a proposal that satisfied Hurry Back in agreement.
Exactly. So I guess if, if possible, I would like to amend his amendment that just says that you will get as many as possible in your negotiations with Hurry Back, under D2.
My amendment was up to, no, I said up to 10.
Okay. Great.
So just for clarification, the, the motion is for D2, the amendment is to negotiate up to 10 drops.
But then we're hearing, if we're going to do that, then the better option is, is C.
Again, if you-
Yeah, we send them all and go back to C.
I, I personally favor C. I, I think the three dimensional effect is better. To, what, what that number is, I don't know, but I think that that can be determined. But then don't we lose the, we lose the potential investor?
My, my-
No, I don't think so.
My issue with C is that it specifies we must have 10 drops. With D, we're saying something 10 or less. It gives him more flexibility in negotiating with Hurry Back.
Can't we say 10 or less is 10 or less with C or D?
Well, I'm just, because the way C is written, it says, "We are specifically reorganizing the way they do the line sets to accommodate 10 drops."
That's true.
And D, we're not doing that. We're setting it up so it can be used for anything. So there are two, I mean, once you go to C, you might as well just do the 10 drops because it's set up that way. So I guess, I want you to be able to negotiate because I want to get as many drops as possible without losing our investor. And that's why I want D2.
But what about the three dimensionality? Is that still an option?
Well, D, for example, D2, um, there's a clear example of that. You could set a scene that has three or four line sets and you restored four drops, let's use the four drops, we don't confuse anything. We set a scene that has four drops and you've saved four line sets and you've saved dimensionality and one scene.
It, it, it feels possible to say, um, that D2 is the preferred, um, choice to go into negotiations. If it's negotiable to have up to 10, we can choose the option C2, which would actually benefit the spacing and give you, it's a better choice.
Because they're closer together.
Right.
And that's, I think, what many of us would have chosen for the beginning.
Right, right.
Right.
So when the staff, yeah, when the staff makes the recommendation, we don't, we don't know where, where your, um, exact thought process on the drops is. That's, again, why we reference D. We said that if you were leaning toward drop restoration, we said C, so we don't want to confuse that. The last accommodate, the last comment probably is what the staff needs before with Hurry Back. Is D2 is the preferred option to negotiate with Hurry Back up to, and if we can accommodate up to 10 drops, do that in your negotiations. If it ends up being 10, then the staff would bring back Option C. And again, um, that also works, um, in this context as well. And again, I don't, again, I don't want to add another layer of confusion, but remember, just like I said in the pre-council, like Levy Park, this is coming back. Your decision tonight is crucial to our negotiations with Hurry Back. But you are going to see this again. You're going to have to approve the agreement with Hurry Back that we hopefully can reach. And in there will be that detail of D and C. Um, if you, if you give the direction of the staff that we just mentioned. So I also want to, to give you that thought, that we don't want to continue to move this decision down the road and we keep moving it. I, I fear that Hurry Back will, uh, because of timing issue, not want to pursue this anymore. So it's just a reiteration of, you are going to hear this again, but this decision is crucial.
Well, I agree. I think it's critical that we get this agreement in place and, and negotiations begin immediately and, and we find a way to accommodate Hurry Back's, uh, needs. Michelle?
I just have two more comments. Um, it also will come back to us when we start talking about restoration, correct? And what we're going to do with the remaining drops and all of that will come back before. So there'll be more, many more discussions about this, if I understand correctly.
Of course, we would bring back a restoration plan to you again. I'll just, it's important that we, I mentioned that caveat, that we really feel that that needs to be done at a later date.
Right.
After everything is done with Hurry Back.
Ben, well, I just had one more thing. And I just want to say to Mike Sloggi, who, who's taken some hits for this, um, th- this has been years, years of work, long before Mike ever came along. And he just happened to pick the temple, which happens to house drops, to come up with this proposal. And I was actually really thankful because I sat on this committee where we were talking about the drops and there was really, all of our ideas were great, but there was really no way to see, to get to that point where we were actually going to restore because we didn't have the facility for it. And whatever happens, Hurry Back's successful, Theater, Demis to be successful, or they're not, we're going to end up with a building that's going to be functional and it's all going to be because we're going to have a partnership between private and public. And for me, that's the preferred way. So I, I'm just thankful that we have people in this town that are willing to work with us that way, because it is really how we've gotten some of the great facilities that we have.
I agree. I'd like to add too, though, that, um, at some point, it sounds like we're going to have to make a decision about which of these drops we're going to select. Um, I would think the Fine Arts Commission would have a role and perhaps they could advise the council on which of those 97 drops, whatever the number is that we select, and help us with that decision.
Fine Arts Commission is there to advocate arts for the community and bring recommendations to the council. I think that would be a reasonable choice.
Michelle?
Just a comment, you know, however we deal with this, um, in your negotiations and if, um, Hurry Back has a business plan that needs to get underway soon, uh, all of these things can happen simultaneously. One doesn't have to happen, other than the direction we're providing tonight, uh, you know, given, given those drops and what we were talking about, about as far as the restoration goes. But as long as the negotiations result in a successful agreement, you know, we can do everything together.
Or if we can't do it all together, then Hurry Back take, takes precedent over the other work.
Yeah.
Correct. Love to get an amendment and an emotion behind that. Right.
George?
I mean, I don't know where we're all at now with amendments and this and back and forth, but-
We've got one amendment, I think, and one more.
Uh, we spent a lot of time on this. We've met with, uh, the manager and everyone else involving all this and D2 was the recommended option. I am going to vote for D2 to get this process moving. And how many drops you save, whatever it may be, that will all come, that'll all come out of, of your negotiations with, uh, with Hurry Back. So I'm going to go with what you recommended to us. You had all the time in on this and that's what I'm going to stick with.
All right. We have a, an amendment. Do you want to read the amendment back to us?
The amendment is to, um, well, the main motion is to authorize, uh, Option D2. The amendment is for up to 10 of the historic drops.
Okay. We'll vote on the amendment. If we're ready, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Um, is it 3, 3?
No.
Oh. Just, 2?
5, 2.
5, 2? Okay. Well, in, we're in favor.
Right.
Motion passes then.
Now the main motion.
Now the main motion. Any further discussion on that? No?
And the main motion is to take Option D2.
D2.
Okay.
With the amendment.
With the amendment.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And item 7.1 is council concerns.
Well, since we haven't seen Michelle for a while, we'll let her go first.
Okay. I just wanted to say thank you to the park reg staff and whoever else worked on that, or maybe Carlos. Those signs downtown look fantastic. Monica, I love the little route map down by the, um, bus route. It looks great. They look really great. Um, and then I, I just had a couple requests, um, a year or so ago, we started talking about bikeways in Winona and I'm just wondering if we've made any process with integrating them into our street, um, improvement plans. I keep, um, I'm on that bikeways, uh, Facebook and I keep looking at the posts and all these ideas from across the country and I'm just wondering if we've made any progress with implementing that as part of our street improvement plans moving forward. So when a street is repaired, what is our bike route going to look like? And if I, or if we can have a presentation or some type of report on that next meeting or by email, I, I would appreciate it. And then one other, um, request, I, I know that Excel Energy is going to be ripping up Third Street. Third Street has a fairly new street within the last five, seven years? It's pretty new. So I'm hoping that, um, we can consider possibly if there's a way to find this in the budget or in negotiation with Excel, that we might be able to implement some of that streetscape design, to see what the shortened walkways would look like in the downtown, kind of get that one block done, so we can get an idea of what it would look like, how patterns might move with parked cars and pedestrians, so that it might be something we can also implement in our street plan moving forward. So I don't know if that's still possible, um, Steve, but if there's a way that we can look at that with, once the street's ripped up, it just seems the appropriate time to maybe look at a little bit of a redesign or implementing some of those things that we as council had all kind of looked at and said, "Yes, that, that will look nice downtown." If it's possible. That's all I have. Glad to be back.
Glad to have you back.
Thanks.
Jerry?
Pass.
Al?
Uh, just like to, uh, thank Officer Klinger from the Winona Police Department for, uh, conducting a meeting for first ward residents, suggesting ways, uh, they can make their homes less attractive to burglars. How the Winona Police Department can assist if needed. It was a great meeting, a great event, and I appreciate, uh, her appearance, answering questions and helping those folks out. That's all.
Thanks.
Pam?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Paul?
Uh, I want to thank Chad and Ruip for the work on this and, and being informative. I want to welcome Lee, um, to our, our sphere and I'm, I'm looking forward to the Destination Art Center and, um, Winona being it and, and being the place on the map to go to. Um, and I also want to acknowledge, uh, John Howard, who isn't here tonight, for getting the Partners in Energy going. Uh, and, uh, I think there are going to be some wonderful things coming from that, uh, out of that, we'll look forward to that going forward.
George?
Happy Saint Valentine's Day.
That's all.
That's it?
Wow!
You okay? Yeah, really. We're not going to argue with you.
We wore them down.
Moving on to the consent agenda, there are three items. The approval of the minutes from January 17th, a claim against the city by Winona Agency on behalf of Dalton Cook, and a claim against the city by Delwyn Schneider.
Move to approve the consent agenda? Second. Motion by Al, seconded by Jerry. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Jerry?
Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Or adjourn?